Kiskey Area School District Board of Directors Legislation Meeting on today, Monday, November 17th, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Liberto, roll call.
This is Kwon Kousi.
Present.
Mr. Sterling.
Present.
Mrs. Snyder.
Present.
Mr. Shaner.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
Mrs. Ralph.
Present.
Dr. Halter.
Present.
Mrs. Mellinger.
Present.
Present.
Next, Dr. Lore, Superintendent, Presentation.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. We had our construction update this past Wednesday, but tonight we have some exciting presentation to share with you tonight with some of our fall athletes who have qualified for the PIAA competition. We have from cross country, we have Ms. Kelsey Lott in San Plasio, who's also a four-time qualifier. And in Boys Golf, we have Max Matura and Brady Jankowski. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Knoll for the presentation tonight.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. Tonight, I'm excited to honor our four PIAA state qualifiers. Our first, we'll start with Boys and Girls Cross Country, Senior Kelsey Lott. This was Kelsey's first year running cross country, and in her first year, she qualified for the state tournament. Among that honor, she was first, I'm sorry, excuse me, she finished as a medalist at the Gateway Invitational, the Kiskey Invitational Medalist. She medaled at the WCCA and was also an All-Section nominee, Senior Kelsey Lott. For the Boys, we have Senior Sammy Plasio. Sammy is a four-time state qualifier in cross country. He also was a medalist at Gateway, but he was the Gateway Invitational Champion. He took first place at Gateway. He was a medalist at the Red, White, and Blue Invitational, the PIAA Foundation Medalist, the WCCA Medalist, and he was also All-Section, Senior Sammy Plasio. Now on to Boys Golf. We had two PIAA qualifiers. First is sophomore Brady Jankowski. Brady finished sixth in the WCCA Championship. He was 13th in the WPIAL, and he was one of nine sophomores to qualify for the PIAA State Championships. Sophomore Brady Jankowski. And then we have Senior Max Matura. Max finished second in the WCCA Championship, which I got to say that helped Kiskey Area Boys win that tournament between Brady and Max. He finished fourth in the WPIAL, and he tied for 16th in the state tournament this year. Senior Max Matura.
Come up, stand up, get up here.
I told them they were going to have to speak.
Yes, I want to speak.
Where do they go to college? What are they doing? Come on up.
Want to the podium?
Yeah, just.
Q and A.
Yeah, there you go.
Do you want to get some photos?
Yeah, so why don't you guys talk to us a little bit about your competition first year on the cross-country team? I mean, and just share kind of, if you guys could just go online and share a little bit about your experiences this year and, you know, what you're most looking forward to in the future, maybe some future plans, those of you who are approaching graduation age. So Kelsey, why don't we start with you?
Well, it was my first year, and I didn't know what to expect, joining a new team as my senior year. And the team was very welcoming, and I just had a lot of fun during the season. So it helped me do better. And I'm just, my future plans are about running in college for track and cross country as well as swimming, so.
Very good.
It was a fun year. It was my fourth year. It was fun with the younger kids. We got a young team going. And my future plans are hopefully to get into West Point.
Yeah, so making it to states and the year in general was a lot of fun. Like Sam said, we have also a really young team, so it was fun to share the experience with a lot of young guys. And Brady making it to states together, we had a great time up there, so it was just a fun year all together.
Brady?
Much else to say? One year, two more.
Can we ask questions?
Yeah, I'm on the spot.
These first two, I have to ask, I ran cross country many, many years ago, for two years. Never once was the word "fun" put with cross country.
Well, you were being chased.
So how do you approach a day cross-country course and have fun? Because it's a lot of work.
I think just our team is very uplifting and positive, and that made the whole experience, even whenever we struggled different practices or difficult reasons, just fundamentally helping us.
So when you practiced, do you wear earbuds?
No, you talk to the team.
You talk to the team?
Yeah.
So it was camaraderie. That's awesome.
And I just like the competing aspect of it, too. I thought that was really fun, too.
You two, chasing the golf balls around the course, you used the word "fun" too, so you have to explain that.
Yeah, it was just, like they said, the team aspect and just having people behind you to lift you up no matter how bad or good it's going. It's always just having people around you that are doing the same thing you do.
Same as him. Thank you.
Other questions? I'm going to get a picture.
Do they want to like turn around so their parents can get pictures? Jake, you should get up in there, too. There you go.
I don't want to break the camera.
Do they have any other coaches here with them either?
No, unfortunately, they couldn't make it tonight.
Very good, thank you, guys. You guys are welcome to stick around for the audit report if you wish or not. I mean, hey, we'll do it. I mean, I find it incredibly exciting. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Liberto to talk about our audit report.
Thanks, Dr. Liberto. So tonight, we have with us our independent auditors. We have Bob Belikos from Mar Dussel. He's going to be presenting the 2425 fiscal results as of June 30th. So Bob, if you want to go ahead, the presentation will be on the board, and then I also passed out handouts as well, so.
Thanks, Rick. Members of the Board and Administration. My name is Bob Belikos. I'm a principal with Mar Dussel. It's our second year during your audit. I think we're about a couple weeks ahead of where we were last year pace-wise, so that's good. Things are going well. We're about 90% done. We have a few cleanup items to do, a couple things we need from Rick here to wrap up. We also have to hold up and wait for the federal government to approve the compliance supplement. The draft version's out, but then with the shutdown, everything got held back, so we have to wait until that's finalized, and then we can issue our audit report. We can get the AFR done. Let's do it end of the month, so that'll get issued to this PDE in time for their filing. Okay, so I've got a PowerPoint. Just go through the highlights of the audit. First slide here is our required audit communications. That's how fast you want me to go.
Yeah, I mean, no, it's not. I got it. I think I got it.
Okay. Our responsibilities under generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards and the uniform guidance, our job is to give an opinion that your financial statements are materially accurate in accordance with these standards and generally accepted accounting principles. Management is responsible for the financial statements, the footnotes, and other parts of the report. We are able to issue, or will be issuing, an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level assurance we can give that your financial statements are materially accurate. Significant accounting policies, there was one new accounting standard for this year, number 101, compensated absences. We evaluated the standard. There was no material impact on the school district. Just involved capturing compensated absences that are like vacation sick pay, they're carryover, but not to be paid out, but will be used in the future during their employment. So just based on the size of your balance sheet and your other liabilities, there was no material impact, so nothing really to go through on that one. Significant estimates and disclosures for your net pension and your net OPEB liability. We got third-party reports from the state that evaluate your allocation of your Peasers liabilities here, and then go on your statement of net position. No material audit adjustments to report. Each year, we like to let you know that because the reports you get during the year can be relied upon for your decision-making. We did have some immaterial adjustments and worked through some things with Rick and his team, but nothing material to report as part of the audit. Good cooperation from management and staff, information received timely. We worked a hybrid audit. We did some remote work as well as onsite, and everything is ready and good auditing conditions for us. Okay, moving on to the financial highlights. Your government-wide financial statements, this is a district as a whole, if you operate it as a business, and includes all your long-term assets and liabilities. Some highlights here, your long-term liabilities, bonds payable, you had two bond series issues during the year. 2024 was a refunding issue for 22.3 million, and then 2025 was new money for $10 million. Your total bonds payable as of year-end is about 71 million. 69.3 is long-term, and short-term personal is 1.8 million to be paid during this year. Your net pension liability, that's that allocation for Peasers, 71.9 million. It was a decrease of 4.2 million from the prior year, which is a good thing. It's moving in the right direction, and contribution rate has been lowered as a result to this. So just as market performance has been going well, the assets are improving and helping to cut into that liability. And you do allocate 1.1 million of that to your food service based on the salaries in that fund. The net OPEB liability, this is your retirement, healthcare, and other long-term liabilities to your employees. You have 13.1 million there of a liability, an increase of 490,000 from the prior year, and 213 of that is allocated to the food service. Your net position, your net investment in capital assets, that's all the assets of the district, less depreciation, and then less the bonds and other money used to purchase those, so you're about 2.2 million positive. Unrestricted net position of 68 million. See, that big deficit might look scary, but that's consistent with all school districts. That's a result of that pension and OPEB liability that you're required to put on your statement of net position. So you netted those out, you beat it to good, but all school districts have that deficit net position in PIA due to that pension liability. Next, move on to the fund balances. These are the financial statements that you budget on. Total fund balance of 23.7 million, broken down, your general fund, 6.8 million, which included a 660,000 increase for 2025. I do want to point out that was the final year of your ESR spending, which 785,000 was used, so you did about break even without that ESR funding, just finding ways to supplement that money here in the current year. And then your capital projects fund, you have 16.9 million restricted for spending from your Series 2023 and 2025 bond issues. And then the current year, as I mentioned, you had 32.4 million in bond proceeds, and then 10 million in new funds, and 22.3 million of refunding bonds. Okay, fund balance depends for the general fund. See, you're moving in the right direction here, 2023, you had a loss of 1.4 million and slightly lower of 1.3 in 2024. Then 2025, you had a slight increase of 660,000, which brings your ending fund balance to 6.7 million. I'm just have drafted there. I don't anticipate any further changes in the numbers, but just to let you know, it's not finalized numbers yet. Just a little more detail here on the general fund. Your actual general fund fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures is 9.9%. Your unassigned amount is 5.1%. PD has an 8% cap for raising, using fund balance to budget, balance your budget. And then the Government Finance Officer Association recommends two-month minimum limit on assigned fund balance of 16.67, so you're actually below that. We do have some fund balance assignments as well, so your 9.9% is a little close to that 16, but that's an extreme amount. I think you guys are trending in the right direction here on your fund balance. Food service funds, real quickly, assets of 2.1 million, sitting on cash of about 1.2 million. Liabilities, 1.7 million. As I mentioned, the net pension, the OPEB liabilities, 1.3 million is the large piece of that. Then your net position, 518,000, 47,000 unrestricted. The rest of your investment in the capital assets, the assets in that fund, less accumulated depreciation. And a positive change in net position for 193,000 for the food service fund for 2025. Finally, other matters, you did undergo a single audit for 2025. As you exceeded 750,000 federal expenditures, you had 5 million in total. Title I and the special education cluster were audited as major this year. They hadn't been done in two years and required to be, as they both exceeded the 750,000. And happy to report the no findings in the single audit. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies were identified. That's a quick overview of the audit. Any questions I can answer?
I do. So I've been on the board, this is my sixth year. This is the first year that no one's approached anyone on the board to ask if they had any concerns or questions. Why is that?
I believe we reached out to the treasurer.
And who would that be?
I got the email.
We emailed.
Because I always could. I was going to say something. I did get an email with some questions, but they were general questions. I can forward that if you're interested.
So, yeah, I mean.
Did I become treasurer?
Yeah. I'd kind of like to know that, too. So that's news to me. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we asked management who to reach out to. But yeah, we're happy to reach out to anybody conditional.
So the questions, John, the email that you received, are questions that you have or questions that?
The email came from their company with questions pertaining to this audit.
A lot of the deals of those required communications, I went through, we let you know our responsibilities versus yours, the audit schedule, the audit timing, and then any concerns, any awareness of fraud, illegal acts, noncompliance.
Oh, you got the questions off by heart.
Yes.
Those type of questions.
Standard questions, okay.
And then I called Rick, or I actually talked to Rick, and saying, is this a legit person? I'm always concerned about that aspect of it. He said it was, so I answered him, sent him back. I have no problem. Do you have a problem with forwarding that to the board?
No.
My answer?
Nope. We work for you guys. However you want to handle that, we're happy to reach out to whoever.
Dr. Lore, any problem with me doing that? No?
My contact information is on the last page. You can reach out. If you want to get in touch with them.
Okay, I'll do that when I get on tonight. I'll stay up late.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, we do not have anyone signed up for citizens' comments on agenda items. Mr. Repack was here last week and gave his solicitor's report. Board representative reports, is there anything new to report since last week?
Yes. Last week at the committee meeting, it was asked about the numbers of students that attend the WIU, and I did reach out to Dr. Conway, and he responded. Just an update to an early intervention, we have 83 students. At Clearview, we have five. In Work Discovery, we have one. And then English as a Second Language, we have 21. The others are kind of more protected area, and I don't want to give off the numbers in those. But total direct service is 129 students that the WIU serves from our district. And our meeting is on November 20th. It starts now.
Compared to other districts, are these numbers?
I wouldn't know.
Oh, because they don't. Yeah, I guess they wouldn't share that, yeah. All right, thank you. And that was from West Marlin County Intermediate Unit. Anyone else? No, okay. Okay, so we are going to move to reports to the board. 6.1 to 6.4, do I have a motion to approve? Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, perfect. I also need a motion to approve the minutes. We're in 7.1. Do I have a motion?
No.
Second. Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Perfect. I do not believe we have communications or old business. Mrs. Snyder, personnel.
Madam President, I move that we approve items 10.1 through 10.8 on this evening's agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Mrs. Snyder, finance.
Madam President, I move that we approve items 11.1 through 11.5 on this evening's agenda.
Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Passed. Mrs. Kolakowski, legislation.
Yes, I make a motion to pass 12.1 and 12.2 under legislation this evening.
Second. Thank you. Sorry. Sorry. That's okay. I said, okay, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Perfect, those policies pass. Okay, now we're moving to the bills. Ask you to approve 13.1 through 13.3 on tonight's agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Mrs. Mellinger, student activities.
I make a motion that the board approve under student activities, items 14.1 and 14, or 14.3, sorry.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. All right, curriculum and professional development, asking for approval of 15.1 through 15.2. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes. Mr. Shaner, construction.
Madam President, I make the motion to approve 16.1.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Perfect, that one passes. We also do not have any citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Okay, so I guess this is the part where we go around and have citizens' comments, I'm sorry, board members' comments. Can I start with you, Mrs. Mellinger?
Yeah, today, John and I attended an assembly at the upper elementary. It was to present our teacher, Ms. Rebecca Stankowski, sixth-grade teacher with the Teacher of the Month Award that WTI does. She was presented with a check for $1,000 that she can use for classroom supplies. The kids were super excited about being on the news, and I have to say, that was probably the most enthusiasm I have ever seen out of Ms. Nichols. It was a good time. It will air, I believe, the last Tuesday of the month at 12 o'clock and the 4 o'clock times. Other than that, I would like to again congratulate the students that were here tonight, wish them all the best in their futures, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's your last meeting, so I want to thank Kathy, Becky, and Todd for all your time and dedication to the board. Kathy, I will miss you at the tech center.
I know.
I don't think we will ever find somebody that likes this finance stuff. I think they purposely made the auditing work tonight.
I go out with a bang.
I also want to congratulate the cross-country and golf.
Mrs. Kolakowski. Also echoing what Mrs. Mellinger said and Mrs. Kamer about the students, they're athletes. Thank you for representing Kiskey and doing so well. Thank you so much to Kathy, Todd, and Becky. Kathy, we really are going to miss this finance piece from you. I mean, I know we keep saying it, but we really are, because sometimes you ask the questions, and I'm like, I never even thought to ask with that. So good luck to all of you, and thank you for all of your time and commitment to this board. Tomorrow night is the high school concert, featuring eighth-grade chamber singers as well. Some other Kiskey shout-outs, former art teacher, Mr. Kay. I'm not even going to try to pronounce his name, even though fellow Polack by marriage, I'm not going to even attempt. But he was chosen from the Pittsburgh Penguins to come up with the design idea for the pens.
Cancer.
Thank you for the words there. So that was pretty special. And he's very dedicated to that and has a heart for that, so that was pretty cool to see. And thank you to your brother, who is also an Kiskey graduate at, what was it, Steeler Game a couple weeks ago?
Two weekends ago.
Two weekends ago for his service and his well-deserved retirement from the United States Marines. So thank you to you and your family for that, and I think that's it.
Mrs. Ralph.
All right. Echoing everything that everyone has already said, thank you very much to the three of you for your dedication to the school board, much appreciated. Congrats to the students today who were presented in cross-country and golf.
Becky.
Well, I have to echo everything they have said, but I do have to say, you know, it's been a great pleasure and an honor to be in the presence of each one of you. Each one of you truly brings something to this table. And for anyone who stepped into this position who knew nothing about it and knew nothing about the people here, I didn't even know Kathy was here, and, but to see the dedication that each one of you knew is my mark. And it's to be really commended. And for anybody that doesn't think that you do, they need to come and sit in here and hear all of the effort that you have put forth in the heart. And you always take each student, each teacher, and the district very seriously. And all decisions are made really, I have to say, to everybody's best ability. So it's a great team, and it's a shame that like you're losing people like Todd and Kathy. They were really a strong part, so hopefully whoever steps into these shoes can kind of kind of build them a little, because you guys are pretty great, and you all are. So I want to thank, I mean, I got to know all of you, it's a really cool blessing, and I want to thank you. That's about it before I cry.
Thank you. Mrs. Snyder.
So first, to our athletes, congratulations. You know, it's such an effort that no one realizes. I mean, not only the coaches, the kids, the parents, the time. It's amazing the time that they put in, and, you know, well deserved. Thank you for all of your kind words. I appreciate it. I won't cry. I'm trying not to cry. So it has been an honor to serve with every one of you. I've connected with every one of you on some level. It has meant a lot to me. It's meant a lot to me to try to, you know, give back the little bit that I could. My best advice walking out the door is treat it like your own money. Think about it like your own money. You have X dollars to spend, don't spend over that, you know? It's unfortunate, bringing in money is always a little bit tough and, you know, always quickly spent, because there's always needs. But I think that the administration has the right heart, and they're working on, you know, making positive changes in our district. So just like to see that going forward continually. And congratulations, congratulations. You know, like I said, it's been a pleasure.
Mr. Shaner.
Boy, I don't know where to start. I still want to come back to the cross-country. The word "fun" doesn't fit in the cross-country. I want to thank the three of you for your time here, your commitment, hours we put into, a lot of people don't know. This side of the table is going to be empty, so I know there's a board member that's been elected in our audience, so maybe you'll sit in one of these three seats. As Dawn, you mentioned about Mrs. Nicholas, the enthusiasm by her, the whole group, fantastic, and it got me wound up. I would have stayed clear to the end. I almost stayed to the end, but I couldn't stand anymore. I had to get to the car. So again, thanks. The only comment is, I thought you were going to say, "Don't raise taxes."
Oh, jeez.
Oh geez, it's in my heart, John, I figured you knew.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sterlitz.
Well, yes, echoing everyone, congratulations to cross-country and golfers who are gunning states, cross-country runners, swim practice already started, so hurry up and finish and get to swim practice. As far as the board goes, thank you for the good four years, everybody. When I got on the school board four years ago, I, I really didn't know how much a school board did, and in four years, from a completely restructured administrative team, filling a lot of vacancies with some of the best administrators in the state, building a new school, we got a new tennis course, new track, and all of these things took hours and hours and hours of deliberations and conversations, and executive sessions, and, and, you know, public meetings, and it's a lot, it's a lot more than I thought it was, and, and I think this board has done a very good job, and, and as our solicitor frequently says, we're a professional board, he's had a lot of school boards that have had a lot of problems, we have our disagreements, and we have our flare-ups and our problems, but we work them out, and, and that's one thing going forward, I hope everybody that comes up here and takes these positions remembers that and continues with that, because professionalism is above all the most important thing to the school board. So, thank you.
Dr. Rau.
Yes, again, just like to echo everybody's comments this morning. Dawn, you mentioned already that that's gonna air at 12 o'clock and 4 o'clock on November 25th. It was phenomenal, and I, and again, I know Mrs. Mather said last time, she was here in front of the board, about Ms. Johnson's presentation at the upper elementary school and how well the students were behaving. Our kids were phenomenal this morning, I mean, just, I mean, even in the downtime where Ms. Janelle Hall was interviewing parents and it kind of got quiet, I mean, our kids were just an incredible representation of what we want to see. It's absolutely wonderful audience, and I asked Janelle and the camera guy, said like, on a scale of, you know, 1 to 10, like, how do, how do we rate in terms of the schools that you go into, in terms of what you see, and they said, oh, 10 out of 10, and then as the kids were exiting, Janelle Hall said, that's an 11 out of 10, you know, your kids are phenomenal. So, a testament to them, and a congratulations to Ms. Stankowski for being honored that award, you know, it's, we've got a ton of great teachers in this district, and it's a shame we get to recognize one, but what an honor it was and the way that it was done. And...
Oh. Written prepared.
In no particular order. So I just want to address each of you, and just give you my, my thanks and my appreciation. So Kathy, the longest-serving member of this group is, sits here today, your steady leadership has made an unmistakable impact on Kiskey area. You've been incredibly supportive of me personally, and of our entire administrative team and everything that we do here. You have a gift of cutting through clutter and guiding the board to a consensus point when, when we needed it most, so I really appreciate that, and your support of all of our programs has been absolutely evident, but your advocacy for our arts program and your advocacy at the Career Center has been especially meaningful to me personally and also to the district, and so your voice has shaped those pathways for years to come, you've been a great example, and even though you're leaving the board, your impact, your impact goes on, so thank you for your service. Todd, served as a board member, served as a board president, for us, you've modeled decisiveness, clarity, and a deep understanding of that role, and just personally, your leadership has shown a trust in the administrative team that I've truly appreciated over, over the years, and you've always held us accountable in the right ways, and asking questions, and you've worked collaborative with your fellow board members, so from every conversation that we've ever had, it's clear that you bleed brilliant gold in a way that is to be admired. And again, you consistently put the students and families of the district first, and so your commitment to doing what's best for kids has been evident in everything that you've done, so I want to thank you for, for your service on this board, and I know y'all aren't going away, and so we're gonna be seeing each other, it's just you not having to be in a long meeting, so I appreciate that. And Becky, your term on the board, I have to say, you've demonstrated a genuine care for the whole child, right, and your decisions have consistently placed our student needs at the center. You've been a strong advocate for positive messaging, positivity, and the community connection that, that we absolutely admire. So your efforts to bring in the work of others, most recently Tiffany Johnson and other partners and volunteers and supporters have self, have strengthened our ability to serve all of our children very well, and so your voice has added optimism, and has given a purpose to the board's work, so I thank you so much for your service and your, and your love for people, and your love in putting our students in the center. So, each of you guys, and I'm speaking to the whole board, but since y'all are leaving, you've really been supportive during my transition, when I didn't know things that I probably thought I did or should have known, and I'm genuinely thankful for the opportunity to have been, been able to serve alongside you. You're leaving Kiskey area in a better place than when you started, and that should be the mission for every single person, I believe it is on this board and for the new people coming on board, to keep that up here, and keep that the focus and the mission for our students and families and faculty and staff. So, time's gonna pass, at one point, time or another, every single one of us are gonna be replaced here, and that kind of gives purpose to the mission of, of what it is that we do, and I think if we're able to make that commitment to get a little bit better every single day, then we're gonna continue to build something great for, for our community and, and students and families at Kiskey area, so thank you for your service, thank you for your leadership, and most importantly, thank you for the heart that you put into this district. So on behalf of Kiskey, so I just want to thank, thank each of you for your service, we're gonna miss your guts, but we're also going to bring new folks on and, and, you know, go through those growing pains and come together and work as a team, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Hawke, can I say one more thing before I forget? Mr. Matt Smith, I don't know if anyone else has listened to The Little Winds, loved it, enjoyed it, it was fantastic, is that shared on our Kiskey social media page? Okay, if not, it needs to be, everyone needs to listen to it. It gave me a real insight into who he is as a principal and a person, and I loved it, I mean, we all see him sometimes when he's sitting here and kind of like the ball of energy that he is, and it really is everywhere, but the biggest things I took away from it, being purposely positive, I loved that, and the fact that he sets up his desk in the hallways in his lunch, for the kids and the staff to come and talk to him, freaking love it. It's the best thing, I loved it. So, yeah, I encourage everyone to listen to that, and just find out what's going on in our schools, love it.
Yes, I love that too, and I think that was my, you know, what I was, the theme that I was gonna say is that there are so many good things going on at Kiskey with what happened today at the upper elementary, to Mr. Smith, you know, highlighting those things, to Mr. Knolf getting the DICKS grant for our flag football team, there's just so many good things that are happening here. Kathy and Becky and Todd, I will be very sad to not have you on the board, I know Kathy, you and I talked a lot, same thing with Becky and I would talk, and of course Todd, whenever I needed help and needed to figure something out, he would graciously listen and kind of guide me in the right direction, so just because you will not be behind this, you know, table, doesn't mean we won't see you out there, see you at other, you know, Kiskey events for sure, so I look forward to knowing you all in different ways other than fellow board members, so, thank you. We have cake and goodies after this, if you'd like some, so, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.